Alright, thank you everyone. The time is 7:00 PM. This is the general business meeting for the Inkster City Council, August 19th, 2024. We are now officially calling this meeting to order. Roll call please, or prayer. Please stand for prayer. Speaker Rose.
Praise the Lord, everyone. We give honor to the Spirit of Christ and thank God for being in the number one more time. Thank God for being in the midst of this city council meeting with the mayor, Pro Tim, and the council members. We thank you, God, for each and every one of them as you have allowed to be here in the midst, Lord God. Bless them in a mighty way, touch their minds, hearts, and souls, Lord God, that they come together on one accord for the betterment of the people in this great city, oh God. Continue to bless them in a mighty way, that there be no division here, Lord God. But as unity and strength, bring them together on one accord, Lord God. You get the glory, and we get the victory. In the name of Jesus, in Jesus's name, amen.
Please continue. Stand and further pledge allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Byron Nolan, excused. Mayor Pro Tim Chisholm-
Present.
Councilwoman Richardson, excused. Councilwoman Howard-
Here.
Councilwoman Rutledge-
Here.
Councilman Bishop-
Present.
Councilwoman Scott-
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim, you have a quorum.
Thank you. We have nothing for item 1D. We're moving down to item 2, approval of agenda.
So move, Mayor Pro Tim, with the changes, add an item F.
Second. Is there a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to presentations. We have none at this time. We're down to public hearing. Have no public hearings at this time. Consent agenda.
Some of, support.
It's been properly moved and supported. Concerned discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number 6. Boards and commissions have nothing at this time. Item number 7, ordinances. No first or second reading. We're down to item number 8, new business. Item 8A.
Consider approval to accept the CMF/DNR Spark Grant for $977,500 to redesign and reconstruct Tyrone Wheatley Park located on Beach Daily Road between Penn and Carlisle Streets.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item number 8B.
Consider approval for Labor Day Block Party, September 1st, 2024. Location is 3305 Allen, Cross Streets, Beach Daily, Beach and Chestnut. Time of event, 9:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Some of.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item 8C.
Consider approval for Halloween Annual Block Party, date, October 26th, 2024. Location, 28961 Oakwood Street, Cross Streets, Central and Eastern. Time, 5:00 PM to 9:00 PM.
Some of.
Support. It's been properly moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item 8D.
Consider approval of the Ink Town Riders 6th Annual Car and Bike Show, September 1st, 2024. Time of event, 12:00 PM to 8:00 PM. Location, 3650 Middle Belt Road.
Some of. Some of.
Support. It's been properly moved and supported. Is there discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item 8E.
Consider approval of movie night in the street, location, 28961 Oakwood Street. Date, August 31st, 2024. Time, 6:00 PM to 11:00 PM, Cross Streets, Central and Eastern.
Some of.
Second. It's been properly moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. We're down to item 8F.
Council to consider to approve the proposed confidential settlement statement.
Some of.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to public participation. This is an opportunity for the general public to speak at this podium and address this body about matters concerning to you. You have three minutes. The clerk will set the time. At the end of your three minutes, your time will be up. At this particular time, we have approximately seven persons who have turned in public participation cards. The first one is Tyree Hunter.
If that don't work, we'll do it over.
This work.
Okay.
Good evening, council. We need to tell someone to talk about-
Good evening.
Uh, the president of Ink Town Riders, Tyra, if I want to see what you've got. I just wanted to make a correction about the, uh, the car and bike show. We can change it to, we're gonna do a car and bike block party that we did last year. We changed the location, Northland, Yorkville Strip, right there, uh, like St. Thomas Manor.
On down on the opposite end?
On the opposite end.
Down there.
Oh, this one.
Opposite end.
It's a whole new location. I might have to make another motion.
We have the paperwork and this, uh, and then have you fill out, fill up the, for the proper corrections.
Okay.
We'll get that right.
Go right ahead, Mr. Business.
So I need to know now, um, to mayor and council to the viewer and audience, now, Tweak, I need a map for the layout, and now you asking me to close the road. So I need to know the layout and how you planning on entering and exit.
It's, it's to right off Northland, we're gonna start a block party right there at Waylon Court.
I need a map of that because now you asking me to close.
Okay, yeah, I can get that.
That's a different thing.
I can have that, alright.
Yeah, that's what it says. Now you asking mayor and council to approve that you need to close the road.
On the 31st, so how we gonna be able to approve this?
Hold on, one second. That's what we was talking about, uh, so I know your question, uh, Councilwoman Howard's question, Lizzie's question, and Councilman Rutledge. So go right ahead, uh, Councilman Bishop.
Oh, I was saying, so how we gonna go about approving this because we changing the whole layout and everything? How we gonna be able to approve this in time for his event when we don't have another meeting until?
He can.
Six.
For discussion, we can make a contingent upon him having all that information, I guess, to Jerome. Because that's really what the concern is, or to the clerk, so she can forward it to you. I'm just, you know, wanna make sure that the road can get closed in that amount of time.
So item D. So we'll be going back to amend that motion, item D.
Yep.
Okay.
And then I have one last question. So did you, I'm, uh, if I'm thinking about the little strip, it's not really any houses there.
It's nothing there.
Yeah, okay. Alright.
That's where we used to, when we first started the car thing, that was our, we called it the Chill Spa.
Okay.
And that's where we did that little strip, it's though, it's nothing there.
So look at you.
Okay. Alright, so is everybody else, um, as far as that, does that satisfy everybody's questions with knowing that an amendment to item number 8D will be amended?
To new location.
The location will be-
Northland and Yorkville Court.
Northland, on Northland Street between Yorkville Court and Waylon Court, right?
Yes.
Okay.
And to get information answered to me by Wednesday.
And the information has to be given to Madam Clerk, by Wednesday.
Yes, by Wednesday.
Thank you, Mr. Hunter, for that clarification.
Thank you.
Alright, um, Andrew King Senior.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
This is Inkster. So I want to bring up two things real quick. Once again, thank you for having me. I know that sometimes my presence is, uh, amen, this can be a difficult presence because I have a lot of questions and I demand a lot of answers, but that's just me being who I am. We're having our Back to School Bash on August 29th at American International Academy on Henry Ruff, 300 South Henry Ruff, and we're inviting, uh, the city council to come out. Support if you can. Also, we're gonna ask, uh, that this information, the flag, be allowed to be put on Inkster's Facebook page and promoted, um, or promoted throughout the city so that we can get our kids coming back to our school. This is a big push we have. We've enrolled currently, at this time, 675 kids in our district. We're trying to get 700 kids, uh, in our school district. So that's what we're asking to promote, our Inkster, I mean, our Back to School Bash. Uh, we're slated to have some local celebrities come out and participate with us as well. Uh, the second item that I would like to speak to you about is something that's very close to my heart, uh, is a partnership or working together with, uh, the city of Inkster. AIA has consistently, since I've been here, has, has participated in everything that we could, Inkster. We are Inkster. When we list where our school is, we say Inkster. Though we have a campus in, in Westland, we say Inkster. Inkster is where we, where we, where we raise our kids, Inkster where we educate, we're trying to educate our students. I feel that there needs to be more partnership. I would love to see more partnership between the city and our school as far as there's a narrative that there's no schools in Inkster. Well, I know of two. I wear them more than two, but two that claims and represents Inkster. That is Inkster, um, Inkster Preparatory Academy and American International Academy. I know David Hicks is in, in Inkster, and I know Daly is in Inkster, but are they our schools? Are they our schools for our kids, trying to do something for our city? We would love to be in partnership. I was talking to the chief of police about partnering, partnering, doing a partnership with a movie night. Uh, anything that's Inkster-driven, that's promoting to our young people, we would like to be in partnership so that you guys can see how we are invested in the school, maybe that can be some reciprocation back where the city participates in partnering and promoting the school that's here for the city. Um, our kids are spread out all over, everywhere, but Inkster, I mean, American National Academy, this year had 100% graduation rate for our high school seniors. 94% of those kids are on their way to college. 85% of those kids going to school on scholarship. So we're doing part of it. We are, we just took 21 kids to Wyoming, Gillette, Wyoming, for a campout. We created a Inkster Community Pathfinder Club. And for those who don't know what the Pathfinder Club is, it is a Christian-based scouting group that our kids in Inkster tend to participate in, and they don't have to attend our school. So we're building on Inkster. We're trying to grow our city. We would just love to have our city support our growth.
Quick, one second.
I saw the time, so I was trying to do the body.
Uh, two questions. One, what time is the Back to School Bash?
It's from 1:00 to 6:00.
And then, um-
And that's at 300 South Henry Ruff.
And then, um, before we leave today, uh, if you can, like, two seconds after, I've emailed, I think you and maybe one other person, um, previously about coming into the schools and just kind of introducing myself, but also doing, um, the college access programming for my day job. So I just wanna, like, connect with you in regards to that partnership.
Okay.
That was my question. Was it time for the event?
Okay, one is six. Uh, it is August 29th.
You said you will be sending us a flyer for it?
I will, yeah, I can send that to you right now.
Alrighty. Send it to me or send it to the clerk, so whoever can get it out to everybody.
Got you.
Cool.
You have a question? Alright.
Alright. Our next person is Vesta Bartsdahl.
Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Um, I wanted to have some clarity on my bill, my water bill. I've been paying $23 a month for a while, and, um, May to June, my water bill went up to $168, and I need some answers on that.
Got you. Have you had an opportunity to come down to City Hall yet and talk with anybody in the water department?
Uh, I did. She showed me a, well, she gave me a graph of how much water I had used. Well, I mean, I got five flowers in May. Five flowers shouldn't up the water bill to, from $23 to $168.
Got you. Mr. Business, would you be able to speak with this young lady after the meeting? Okay, so after the meeting, Mr. Business will address that with you. No problem. Thank you. Dr. Shatina Jones.
Everything's going fast today. It's 7:06 and we already into the sub of the comments. Um, I love it. So just wanted to, uh, let you all know that we do have, um, everybody, I'm with Alpha Cap Alpha Sorty Incorporated, um, the Inkster chapter would love to work with you because we are working with our children in Inkster. Um, so we have our voter engagement kickoff, which will start this Saturday, and we do have flyers. I've already emailed it to three of y'all, um, to make sure that you have it. I do have some flyers here. We would love to have you all join us. We have a couple of different partners. We'll be working with the NAACP, other organizations within the community to talk about voter engagement, trying to address a couple of things, things. Over the past couple of weeks, we've noticed that people have been, um, unregistered to vote, and all sorts of things are happening. Um, so we would love for folks to come out and join us on Saturday, and as always, we have things coming up in September, and I'll send you the email, uh, for our September 17th event, which will be at Robles Shaw High School, where we are going to be engaging our young people there, and it'll be three different, AKA, tractors who'll be there, um, that will be within the community. So just wanted to let you all know that, so if some people are available to join us, we'll send you that flyer as well.
Thank you very much. Any questions in your mind? Alrighty. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So this is going to be at the Fordy, uh, car and bike.
Thank you. Thank you. Can't really make out the first name, but I believe the last name is Esters. Just go ahead and state your name for the record, so we have clarity, please.
My name's DeAndre Esters, guys. I'm, I'm here on behalf of the chief, um, committee development.
DeAndre Esters, right?
Esters, DeAndre.
Alrighty. Thank you.
Mr. Dixon, I'm pretty sure you guys probably know him. We're doing a data center on Inkster Road at the old municipality building. He called me, he said, "DeAndre, they trying to sue us." And we did all this work discovering, growing in Inkster, trying to put a data center here to help Inkster develop the youth. And I just don't want y'all to sue us. I don't understand what's going on. Little work, day and night, cleaning out four feet of water out of the basement, 2,000 square feet, loads of paper, files, excruciating work. We, um, brought so many people together. Give me a second, guys. Um, because I was there. I was pumping the water out, getting the paper out. Obviously, it's just kind of real emotional to me, seeing that all you guys are so good. We supposed to be working together to make Inkster a better place for everybody. With its children, the schools. And Inkster has such a great history for black folk, with Ford and everything that's just happened with Inkster. So, you know, just don't, you know, close the lawsuit, whatever you guys could do. Work with Jason. Got relationships with a lot of folks. Flagstar Bank, put the tailor in for you guys. Nokia, they partnering with us to head a data fiber optics. There's just a lot that we just working with, to work with you guys, and, you know, that's, I just really can't even say my piece. Because we work really hard, and I don't know what the lawsuit is about.
Okay.
Hurts.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Esters. Alright, Mr. Craig, I don't want to butcher your last name.
Could you say, say it for me for the-
Yeah, I will. Craig Kabilka, North River Park Drive. And that's what I'm here to talk about. Process been going on in our neighborhood that started 15 months ago, where they came in and put in water mains, new connections. The company that did it decided to go through the utility strip, rip out all the trees, trench it, lay a pipe, dug up hundreds and hundreds of years of tree growth. At the end of the project, somebody made the decision to, after they destroyed our street with their equipment, somebody made the decision to grind their street up, mill it, dump it, and roll it. So for the last 12 months, we've been living on a ground-up asphalt road that, since it rained yesterday, is a mud pit today and yesterday. Tomorrow, when it dries up, it's gonna be a dust pit. So when you guys go home tomorrow and get home from work and go, "What a beautiful day. I'm gonna open my windows and have a good night's sleep." We can't do that. If I do that, I wake up covered in dust. Everything in my house is covered in dust. Done dust control, and it helps. Of 15, I mean, 12 months, we've been living like this. At a meeting, there's no money. I don't think 18 months into a project like this, we should have to suffer through the winter again. Okay, I know they're working on it. They're trying it. Internally, I think it should be discussed more about how this is going on. Because quite literally, there's, I'm 70, and I'm saying there's old people in my neighborhood. You can't go, I can't go home and go on my porch and sit because everything's covered with dust. Nobody can do anything in our neighborhood because of, the dust is the big problem. The road is, I encourage anybody, get out of here, John Daly, make a right, go to Avondale, make a right, go to Blackstone, drive down there and drive down North River Park Drive. If you're brave, do it, or don't, you can coffee. It'll be empty by the time you're done. So internally, this isn't the way to do it. Our neighborhood's been destroyed for 15 months, and I really don't want to go through the winter dragging mud and slop and crap up. And it is just an unfortunate situation. Now, that being said, company that hired you, the other part of the project, didn't tear nothing down. They used a process where they just bored underneath. So they went through Blackstone in a matter of two weeks, did that whole street, moved it down that street, and all you'll see are small patches that need to be concreted over, and there's no destruction. So that should be a consideration in future projects of the way the companies are gonna do the job, not just the dollar. But it's time for our street to get attention. I don't care how. Okay, in two weeks and two council meetings, we're gonna get the neighborhood in here. We're skipping Labor Day, but the one after that.
Everybody here?
Well, everybody's concerned.
Okay.
But one good thing is, it's brought our whole neighborhood together.
Alright, thank you. Barbara Cooper.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Council.
Good evening.
And the residents of the city of Inkster. Please, Chief, love you. I'm here, uh, to remind everybody it's coming. The Good Fellows Pancake Breakfast is October the 19th, so the next time you see me, uh, we having tickets. It starts at 8:00 AM to 12 noon at the recreational complex. I'd like to see everyone there come out and support the Inkster Good Fellows. We try to help and service our children, so our children will have a great Christmas. No child without a Christmas. That's our motto, and that's what we're doing. And to all our businesses, we will be coming around, and we want all of you also to put ads in our paper. We're starting early, we hitting the streets, because we want to make sure everyone is serviced in the city of Inkster. Have a blessed evening.
You too. Thank you. Asia Sims.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim and Council and-
Good evening.
Citizens of Inkster. I was just literally reminding you all that this Friday, which is August 23rd, 2024, is our VIP premieres from 6:30 to, 6:30 PM to 9:00, to 9:00 PM at night. It is our Ted Ellis event. That is our VIP promotion. We also have the general admission. Now, there's been some misinformation about the general admission. Only the parents have to pay. Our children of Inkster do not have to pay. They can literally paint with Ted Ellis and take a canvas home and take pictures and get autographs. And that price for the general admission for parents is $75. The VIP, um, premiere is literally $250. Yes, you do get a gift bag. Yes, you do get fad. I know some people say, "What'd you get with that?" Yes, you do get a lot of monies with that. It's just not, we just taking your money. You just come in, look at some art, and it's boring. No, you guys are gonna also be painting with Ted Ellis and doing a walkthrough, and he's gonna tell you about his historical life when, when he was at the White House with Barack, well, President, former President Barack Obama, and how he did the Oval Office picture. Um, they are on Google, so if you guys want to just look it up later on tonight, you guys can look at some of his work. He's a fantastic artist, and he has been around for a very long time. He also has done, um, our African Charge H. Wright Museum. He has done portraits for them. He is also doing portraits for PBS Kids. A lot of you might be familiar with the PBS Kids backgrounds. When it has our, um, black culture in the background, that is him. So he's a well-known artist, and I appreciate if you guys can just show up for Friday and Saturday and support. And if you don't want to buy a ticket, that's fine. You guys can just donate $2, $5, anything that you would throw in your gas tank, and you could just throw it along to us. So thank you. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Oh, that's gonna be at Christ of the City Refuge.
Gabe Henderson.
Hello, family. How's everybody doing today?
Good evening.
Oh, family, no doubt about it. I can't say no more than that, or say of, you know, closeness and all that, you know, but we all family. But anyway, Gabe Henderson, okay, beautification, you know, committee guy, okay. I just want to speak on, we're gonna have the dumpsters out the 31st of, uh, this month, and, uh, locations. Westwood Park, uh, it's on Strowman. Wheatley Park on Penn, Lamont Park right there on Pine, and Dozier Rec Complex, you know. I know we had a little problem last month, you know, or mix up on those, I mean, on the dumpsters, but this should be out, okay, 31st. And if you got the stuff you want to throw away, get rid of and all that, and just come up, the main location, of course, is, look at Dozier. I'm gonna have trash can, uh, trash bags, gloves, and all that. And if you do, uh, pick up any certain areas, you know, you can haul it to the dumpster, just, uh, come there and, and put a note on there and say, "You got such, such, such place," you know, and I'll come and pick it up, you know, and take it to the dumpster. And we, a neighbor man, he was asking me about free sidewalk replacement. Do we have something going like that? I know we ain't got a lot.
We do have a sidewalk replacement program that started in District 2. I'm not sure what the status of, is it, what it is, what the status of it is right now.
Okay.
Mr. Business.
Okay.
Still in District 2?
Okay, uh, that's, okay, I'm in District 2, huh? Yeah.
You're spoiled.
Well, it's, well. Looking to, but he, he can come up here and put a, what, sign it, you know, his location and all, and he would like to try to see if he can.
I don't think it's working exactly like that. They have a process in place where they're going, you know, phase by phase, and so District 2 is where it started off at.
Right.
Um, I just forgot the border streets. I knew them for a while when we were walking the streets, but I-
Okey dokey, and, uh-
Middle Belt 2.
So Middle Belt for Avondale, yeah, uh, Avenue Road.
To cheer you here. Okay, so that's the slow rectangle for now.
Y'all, y'all speed, y'all going real fast tonight. I almost didn't make it. Y'all trying to get home for the- Yeah. Okay, I love y'all, you know.
The cleanup starts at 9:00 AM at the Booker-
Well, yeah, yeah, Rec, Rec Complex, right, you know, and they got the other locations, you know, the dumpsters, dumpsters be there. Well, yeah, yeah, Rec, Rec Complex, right, you know, and you got the other locations, you know, the dumpsters, dumpsters be there.
Okay, um, I think someone may from the audience have a question for you about, probably about extra beautification, sure.
Oh, definitely, and we give, give you a certificate, you know.
Yeah, right.
Definitely. Students doing, works like that, yeah.
Alright.
Okay.
Thank you.
Well, y'all take care now.
You too. James Skrill Everhart.
Peace, uh, residents, council, Mayor Protem, um, just giving a, a update. Um, last week I had, did, uh, just an overview of a windshield project that I'm commencing for my community health worker course with Misha. Um, I'll be graduating, uh, this week, this Friday, for my, my last, uh, presentation. Um, but I wanted to get with council, uh, through that process, I've been speaking to a lot of constituents within side of my district, District Four, as well, um, and really on the city services side, uh, there has been a lot of complaints, uh, but the constituents is not able to attend city council meetings in person due to children, job, a lot of different things. So I'm doing a survey within side of my community, um, to get more people involved and to hear their concerns. Um, I got some people for you, Jerome, um, in regards to, um, uh, sidewalk trees and sewage, um, that's happening within side of that district as well. Uh, but is there is something that we can create, uh, for citizens, uh, complaints to services that is digital, so that way we can get constituents involved and not just come in in public comment if they can't make it, or us being a liaison as community members, uh, because we want that constituent to make the complaint theirself, uh, rather than somebody, you know, playing telephone and us bringing the complaint to you all. Um, is that something we can look into, do we already have it, I've been on the website, I, I haven't found anything.
There's not necessarily a formal option for them to complain, but if they wanted to reach out to any department head, if you go to our city website and click on staff directory, it's all listed right there, phone numbers and email addresses. Nine out of ten times, that's how I'm communicating with the department heads about information or issues that residents are bringing to me, because I'm forwarding a concern right to them, so they can get it out to the right person. Sometimes it's oversight, sometimes it just hasn't been attacked or handled yet, not attacked, um, so they, if they're using digital technology, and they have those capabilities, that's where I would direct them to. Other than that, if they had anything that they needed to, you know, state during a council meeting, they would have to just send that in writing to the city clerk's office seventy-two hours in advance of a council meeting.
Okay, um, and then for my last minute, real quick, um, I would, I would definitely want to put something together with city council and the, and the mayor, um, in regards to do a citywide windshield project, uh, for the whole city of Inkster, in regards to see our assets and our resources and what we really need to kind of invest in. Uh, I had got a green light as well from our master trainer from Misha, um, to kind of incite that within side of our city. Um, as I proposed, uh, my project to them, they were very interested in Inkster, um, in regards to the assets and, and the resources that's needed here to help us thrive.
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Everhart, you spoke of city services that the residents feel that are being lacked in that area. Um, I heard you speak to Mr. Bivens, was there anything additional, or was that all?
Uh, say that, say that last part again, was there?
Anything additional, or was that all?
No, that was really it, just the city services with the trees and, and the sidewalks that was happening inside of that area. Um, and also the flooding that happens on, you know, within side of the blocks over there.
Got you, okay, um, make sure too, because I may have not sent it to you, or you, I don't know if you got notification or not, with all the water mains and stuff they're doing right now along Avondale and other streets like Mr. Craig has spoke of too, make sure I get the information over as well, so you can share that with, um, those residents, because as you go down Avondale, and you'll see it being actively done as we.
I get the updates, but I did not get the Inkster Road closed down update on that app.
Okay.
So that Inkster Road closed down, it is my whole commute transfer, I never got an update that that was gonna be closed.
I'll get you that press release from Wayne County. That's what he's talking about, so.
I got it.
I know, but I'll ma- make sure I get you all three of those documents. Alrighty, and those were the only cards we have for public participation, that moves us down to city clerk comments.
I'm just wrapped up from the election. And all public comments must be received by the city clerk's office seventy-two hours prior to the meeting in order to be read. And just gearing up for early voting again, starting in October, going into November election.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Treasure, nothing at this time, Mayor Council, we're gonna start down here with Councilwoman Howard. Nothing at this time, Councilwoman Redlich.
Nothing.
Councilman Bishop.
Nothing for me.
Councilwoman Scott. And I have nothing. That moves us down to, floor is open for a motion to adjourn.
So long.
Second. Properly moved and seconded.
Whoa, 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 who didn't make the amendment?
There we go.
Yeah.
So let's hold off on that and move back up to item eight D.
Okay, so I make a, um, friendly amendment for item eight D, um, to include the new address.
Northland, Yorkville, and, um, move the location to Northland in Yorkville.
So Northland Street between Yorkville and Waylon Court.
Okay, so to move the location, um, from Northland Street between Yorkville and Waylon Court.
Or a block party.
Or a block party, um, items are to be turned in to the city clerk on Wednesday, by Wednesday, for that actual block party.
That would be the twenty-first.
The twenty-first, thank you.
And, uh, who's second the motion?
Second.
Who's, or who did initially? Bishop, do you accept those amendments?
I do.
Alright, is there further discussion from this body? Here and none, all in favor?
Aye.
All the polls, the amendment, the motion passes with the amendments as stated. Thank you all for catching that, and we are now down to, the floor is open for a motion to adjourn.
So long.
To properly move and second it, all in favor?
Aye.
All the polls, motion passes, this meeting is now adjourned at seven thirty-seven PM.
Love it.